And Mr. Lind actually has an extra statement regarding recording.
Yep, so we are now going to begin a remote meeting through the use of video communication. It is important that we continue to respect the privacy and confidentiality of members of our school community, including our teachers and staff and our students and their families. By participating in this remote meeting, you agree that you will not save, record, share, or post this session, or any photos from this session. I also agree that I will not save, record, share, post this session, or any photos from this session. This meeting is being recorded by the Northbrook Field LPAC or broadcast. If you do not agree to these rules, please connect from this.
Thank you very much. First off, recognition?
Yeah, there's a couple of recognitions. First, next week, May 4th through the 8th is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we usually have many different activities going on in our buildings to recognize the work that our teachers do throughout the year, from luncheons to breakfast, things organized by students, things organized by PTO and parents. Obviously, we're not going to be able to do those things, but I want to make sure we shout out all of the teachers, including our parent teachers, because parents are acting as educators for the past month or so, and I know it's been challenging for them. So Teacher Appreciation Week, we appreciate all our educators from our paid teachers to our parent teachers. Second recognition for me is Friday, May 1st is National Principals' Day. And so I'd like to recognize Mr. Heinecke, and this is priestly for the work they do every day, making sure that the buildings open and close and things run smoothly. So principal job is not easy, I know from experience, so I appreciate what they do, as I do, as I know many do appreciate the work they do.
All right, well, just gonna add the school committee's appreciation for our teachers, all of our staff, actually. And we appreciate very, very much, this is a situation no one ever imagined, and they have our staff at Northbrook Field Public Schools have risen to the occasion in amazing ways. And, you know, I'm not gonna take credit as a teacher, as a parent, so I'm tech support. But, and also for our principals as well, thanks so much for all that you're doing. And, but, you know, as parents, maybe we'll make ourselves a really special breakfast on Friday. So moving on, we gotta approve the minutes for two meetings we had in, oops, I'm sorry, I skipped Cam.
That's all right, Cam is not here right now, so if he shows up, we can double back.
Okay, so we have to approve the minutes for our regular meeting last March. Need a motion from one of my fellow school members, school committee members?
Sure, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the March 23rd, 2020 meeting, as well as the special meeting of April 15th, 2020.
You need a second?
All second.
All right, all in favor? If you unmute yourselves. Okay, so Debbie said aye, Chris said aye.
Aye.
Ruth said aye. Elizabeth, you on there?
Yeah, I said it twice.
Okay.
Only one vote.
And I say aye. All right, so everyone, we've approved the minutes. Do we have any correspondence?
No, there is none.
Okay, and I don't believe we have any presentations, correct?
We don't, we do not.
There are a couple of members of the public listening in. Does anyone have anything they want to add or share? All right, I don't know, last one that was really exciting, there were so many people here, but, okay, all right, back to normal. So, we don't have any school committee reports, so moving on to the very exciting and wonderful news of the financial reports.
All right, so this is unlike a financial report that I've done before as a superintendent, because there's not much I can tell you right now, other than there's a lot of unknowns. We always sort of base the financial report on previous years and what we've spent and what we have coming up, and I can't do that. I can't base anything that we currently have on what we've done previously, because nothing is like, so we're trying to figure out what are the savings and what are the extra costs that are gonna be, that are gonna come out of this? There are obviously some areas of savings, but there are some areas of cost, too, and I'll kind of hit those throughout the next couple of areas, both in the financial reports and in my superintendent's reports, so I won't spend a lot of time on it right now. So Sheila and I are working to try to figure out what those pluses and minuses are, so that we can get a better financial picture, and some of those things we're working on don't necessarily just involve us, they involve outside groups like transportation, special education, and a number of other areas. So some, we have a pretty good idea of where they stand, and things like that are some of our sort of normal costs, like oil. We know we're saving a lot of money in oil for heating of the buildings, and the season for heating is pretty much over, other than occasionally flipping it on, the heat on in the morning to warm up the building, especially if we're gonna get a really cold night, make sure pipes don't freeze, the ones that run on the outside of the building. So, you know, we are compiling all this, because there's gonna be a massive a massive amount of work to transfer funds from line items that have significant savings, the line items that have significant expenses, so there is much more to come on this. I wish I could be more specific, I'll get into a few of the specifics coming up. So in your packet, there was a information that Mr. Minucci completed on circuit breaker extraordinary relief. This is a big job to figure out how much extraordinary relief, one, if we qualify for extraordinary relief, and two, if we do, what it would be. It's really going through all of our students' services and figuring out essentially what it costs, based on the cost that the Department of Education provide to us. They provide certain hourly rates, and they really manage that down to the penny, so it's not what we actually spend, it's what they allow us to charge off as an expense in terms of the cost. And so the last page of that three-page document is sort of where the rubber hits the road for us. Essentially, we
Is that something you can share?
It was in the packet. It was in the packet, I don't know if you have it, let me see if I can call it up.
For the, anybody watching?
It's gonna take me a second just to track it down, so, sorry. Oh, that's not gonna look good at all.
Oh, it's turned sideways, okay.
Yeah. All right, well, you want me to share it anyway? It's just sideways. Sorry about this, I didn't think to do it this way. One of those new sort of things we need to figure out. So, the third page of a three-page document that we have to send to the Department of Education with our claims, and and after doing a lot of figuring, our increase has to be a certain amount more than what it was last year. We met that criteria, so now how much do we actually get to claim? And we are claiming $238,137. But we only get 75% of that, that's how circuit breaker works. So our net claim is 178,602. Now, there's a couple of caveats to that. 75% is based on the rate that the state applies to that, to this formula. It has ranged, 75% is the legal range, that's what the regulations and law claim they should be giving us, but it's always subject to appropriation. And there's been years that it's been anywhere from 65% rather than 75%, all the way up to 75%. The extraordinary relief budget line from the state this year was budgeted at $5 million. To this point, working through all the claims, the state is telling us that they already have $6.5 million in monies requested by districts like us. So, there are already more requests than actual dollars, so my guess is, we're gonna get less than the 178, which is unfortunate, but
But it does bring up a point that I would like to make, which is, all these claims for extraordinary relief took place prior to the situation we find ourselves in currently. So they were part of the regular school year. So Northbrook Field is not alone in the issues that we face with this. So that's a really important point that I would like people to understand, that it is not about Northbrook Field Public School System, it is about the way that the, you know, statewide school districts are dealing with this, so.
Yeah, because it's just such a moving target, and the services that students might need changes, I mean, these are kids, and the situation is always fluid.
Well, it's also, it also has to do with, you know, going all the way to the federal government with the, you know, they do not fully fund, they never have fully funded the mandates, though. I mean, these are things that are necessary for children to have, that's not what I'm saying.
No, you're correct, and so I don't know what the percentage will be, they have to go through all of the claims, they will go over ours with a fine-tooth comb and ensure that it's, all the expenses meet the criteria that they set. If we were to get 75%, then we would receive an additional $178,602. I don't know what it'll be in terms of a percentage, but they have a budget of $5 million, and they have more requests than dollars, so it will most likely be less.
So we'll hopefully get, you know, as much as we possibly can get, I just think it's really important for people to understand that this is a problem, I think, what did you tell me, over 80 school districts statewide?
I think it was 83 school districts applied for extraordinary relief out of the 350.
So it's like close to 30%, so it's an issue not just for Northbrook Field. So, anyway, that is just the point I want to make, and thank you for that.
Moving on, so the second area is transportation. So obviously, our bus company, AA Transportation, is not transporting students, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting. And what we've done is, we've negotiated with AA Transportation, and we've actually done it as a I guess a consortium of districts, 13 districts that all use AA Transportation, negotiated with them, and our goal was to ensure that AA Transportation remains solvent. We can't afford to have them go out of business, because we need to transport our students when we go back to school. But we also need to find an amount, a percentage, that we would pay them, that would allow them to be solvent, but not pay 100%, because they are not transporting our children right now. And these were really the directions from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we worked with AA Transportation, and what we've agreed to in principle, and it will take a school committee vote, and unfortunately, I don't have the final the final agreement for you to actually vote on, so we'll have to wait till the next meeting, or schedule another meeting once that's prepared, is a 75% payment. What that translates to is, we owe AA Transportation approximately $83,000 for our four school buses and our one-seven-passenger van for in-district transportation. And we would pay them about $70,000 of that 80, of that 80,000, 83,000.
Okay. Good.
Of course
When do you anticipate having an agreement?
I was hoping I would have it today. It was sent to AA Transportation for their review, I got it back from our attorney today. But I haven't gotten it back from AA Transportation yet, so I would prefer you not to vote on it until they get back, because if it has any language changes. So
Is it something that we can wait until the end of the May meeting, or is it something you'd rather have us vote on as soon as?
Well, when I talk to the AA Transportation, I'll find out what his feeling is, my personal preferences, if we can if we can schedule a quick meeting to vote on it. At that point, that would be great, because then it can be signed off on, and we can sort of set the bills, have him invoice us for the appropriate amounts for the remainder of the year, and Sheila can pay her bills, because she's freaking out not paying bills. You guys know her well enough to know that she doesn't like leaving them on her desk, because unpaid at this point. And they are, we have their regular invoices, and we're not paying them, so.
Right. I have a question. Do I have to raise my real hand? Sorry.
Go ahead.
The $80,000, is that for spring, or is that for the whole year, or what is that for?
That is, so what we agreed to is paying 75% of the remaining 63 days of school. And we would get a 25% discount on that. Of course, we would not be paying any special education, transportation, which obviously is fairly significant as well.
So it's just 75% of the regular buses?
Yes, and zero on the spend, we wouldn't pay anything on that.
And did we already pay for March 13th through the 64th?
That's part of the negotiations, the way AA Transportation bills is they take the total contract divided by 10, and they send us a bill, an invoice, on the 30th or 31st of each month. So the last bill we paid was February. You know, the February, the one dated February 28th, that was our seventh payment. When we do all the math, essentially, those seven payments come out to paying for 128 days of transportation at 100%. He's only transported our kids 119 days, so we have to do some math, because we've sort of prepaid eight days where there was no transportation, and we're only paying 75%, so there's some accounting to be done to make sure that we're paying 75% on the 63 days of no school. It took Sheila about now to explain it to me, and with lots of charts and graphs.
I think it feels much longer than 63 days, but
Yeah. It'll be 63 days from March 16th through the end of the school year.
Right, okay, so that's basically where, we will not be paying for, since school flows, until the end of the end of the school year.
Right, and, you know, just so you guys know, things like the special ed transportation is, just for the in-town special ed van, is about $13,000, so we'd also be saving that. And then all the out-of-district transportation is much bigger than that, as you know. So, I think it's a fair deal, just so, again, so you know, in your packet, there is an update on other deals that districts have made with their bus companies. Again, all the districts work together as a consortium with each bus company, so if a bus company had six districts, those six districts negotiated with the bus company. If a bus company had 40 districts, those 40 districts will negotiate it as a group. We elected two representatives to represent us in the negotiations. And those were their business managers from Shrewsbury and Montechusse. And they did a really nice job. So we came out at 75%, which is really where others are coming in, as long as the employees are kept on the payroll, and AA did lay their drivers off, but this agreement would bring them back and pay them through the summer, when they usually go on unemployment. Bus drivers usually go on unemployment over the summer. They've been on unemployment, that's gonna be their summer unemployment time, he will pay them. AA will pay them through the summer, including all their benefits, so that was really important to the group, is to make sure the drivers were made whole, so to speak.
Okay.
All right. Couple of quick updates, federal government relief, the CARES Act and the Governor's Emergency Relief Aid. CARES Act totals 200, about 250 million for Massachusetts, Governor's Emergency Relief, 55 million. We have no idea how this is gonna be spent. The Governor's Emergency Relief Aid application just went in last week. The CARES Act application, the state application, hasn't even gone in yet to the federal government.
So I'm sorry, just step back, okay, so the Governor's Emergency Relief Aid is from our, from Governor Baker and our state legislature?
That is from the federal government.
That's from the federal government?
Yeah, that's is also from the federal government.
Okay, so two separate acts.
Yeah.
And one of them, when you say the application has gone in, so as a state, there's been an application?
Yeah, that's how the state accesses the money, similar to how we access it from the state. They submit an application requesting it.
Okay, and then, so for the first one, the CARES Act, that state application has not been submitted yet?
I don't even think the application has been made available yet.
Okay.
So
So that's potential money for us, but we won't know.
Yeah.
And we don't know how it has to be spent.
And we're hoping that that money is very open-ended, which I'm assured it is, to allow us to pay sort of repay some of the areas that we needed to take care of during this issue.
Okay.
You know, so that's what it's, that's what it's for, you know, whether it's where buying PPE equipment and supplies for when we return. I'm hoping it helps us with food services, which I'll go over in a second. But it seems to be a lot of leeway just when we get this money. That's kind of the big question, when is it coming?
Okay, well, fingers crossed.
So there's just a lot of accounting to do with, you know, I guess to close out the financial report of the pluses and minuses, and we're working really hard at it, but it's just gonna take a little time to sort of put it all together.
Okay.
I'm just gonna continue on food services, so we are serving about 30 to 35 meals a day. It's actually a little bit more than that, it's probably closer to 40, we're delivering to five families that need it, we are we're really doing great work in this area. It's an unfortunate truth to this, though, there are costs. Food Services operates out of a revolving account, and that revolving account is funded by kids buying lunch, and the money that we take in from that, either through their parents paying the bill, or federal aid, part of the whole federal lunch program. None of that money is coming in. So it's a revolving account that is not being replenished, and it is slowly being depleted. And we just paid, and we are continuing to pay our employees and buy any food and supplies that we need to pay the provide the 40 lunches a day. That account is essentially empty at this point, there's maybe a couple of thousand left, but it would not cover the next payroll.
So just, if you could explain it like you did for me this afternoon, which is ordinarily, you said you'd save about 300 meals a day are either purchased or refunded, not refunded, but
Supplemented through federal aid, a federal school lunch program.
So, yeah, we're feeding our families that need it, and who have requested it, but it's nowhere near the number, so consequently that account is not not being, as you said, replenished.
Yeah, so every pay period, we pay about $5,400 in payroll, and then whatever food and supplies we purchase, which is kind of small right now, I mean, obviously, feeding 40 40 kids is not a huge amount of money, it's probably about $700 a month. Well, no, $700 per pay period is pretty small, so so as a revolving account, it cannot operate in the red at the end of the year. For those of you who were on the committee a couple of years ago, when the school committee actually had to approve funds to keep the food lunch, the food services program, the lunch program solvent, we had to transfer however many thousands of dollars from our accounts into the food services revolving account. That's sort of similar, obviously, back then, it's because the program was losing money. The program has been doing wonderfully, we were ahead, we were able to serve you know, a little over a month's worth of food, and pay our staff for that time without bringing in any money. However, it's empty, this is one of those negative parts, so any of the, some of the savings that we'll have in transportation, maybe in oil, is gonna have to go to resupply the food services revolving account. That's where we get into the pluses and minuses.
It's very important, we're keeping our staff, paying our staff, and we're helping families in town, so, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's an important aspect of what you all are doing, so.
Yes, and so iconic accountant has agreed that based on the fact that it needs to be made whole, that account, by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, she has said, why don't you do one transfer at the end of the year to make it right? The federal government has approved Massachusetts' request to fund 100% of the lunches, we have lunches and breakfast, we serve two meals per child per day. So when we do turn that in, and the federal government will give us some money, but again, it's a small number of meals that we're actually serving. And again, I go back to the CARES Act and the Governor's Emergency Relief Aid, I'm hoping that some of those funds will be eligible to be moved into an account like food services to save that program. And that's my hope, so it's one of those minuses of this program, but it's a minus that's worth it, we have families that are in need, and providing them with a breakfast and a lunch for each student each day is is what we should be doing, no one should be going hungry, or you know, if there's any way we can help minimize that, we should do it, and we are doing it, so the ladies have been doing a wonderful job, and the food services put together those meals, we have a group of us that are delivering, there are about eight staff members that are helping out with delivery on a daily basis, and we'll keep it going.
Yeah, thank you all very much for, I mean, you know, you know better than anyone in the community when certain families and kids are in need, and we appreciate how much, you know, effort has gone into that program, and especially the food delivery, because I know there were some families that couldn't access the food, so and just additionally, which is not part of our school budget at all, is the food pantry, so I'm sure at the end, we have donations to thank, but so many people have, in the community, have donated food to support the food pantries as well, so that's really wonderful.
Yes. The next item is the Yes. Um, the next item is the added district private day and residential school tuition. We're trying to negotiate with these schools. Um, and and my position has been, I, I wanna pay them a hundred percent. Um, but I, I wanna pay them a hundred percent with the assurance that after this is over, a town will, our, our school department won't be on the hook to pay for um any type of compensatory services, services that weren't given during this time. Um, I can't pay a hundred percent for a service and then have to pay for it again because it wasn't provided. And uh, these schools are, are being very challenging to work with. Um, to be, to be perfectly honest with you, they are um, they are maintaining that, that they are providing the service, so we should be paying them a hundred percent. Uh, and again, I have no problem paying a hundred percent as long as if, when this ends, that it'll come back to us and say, we need more money because, you know, some kids didn't get services during the uh during the school closure time. We need to make up for that. I'm not paying for it twice. I'll pay for it once. It's, it's appropriate to do that, but um, we're trying to negotiate with them now. That's, that's been a real challenge, much more challenging than the bus company.
Are you doing this again as a group?
So it's a little harder to do it as a group only because we have kids at various schools, so don't a bunch of other school districts, and the services that the kids get are so different.
Okay.
Um, so it's really hard to just say this is a percentage.
Right, okay.
Is that not, is that not something that would be documented?
Yeah, so.
That the service is taking place, I mean?
Yeah, the Department of Education has put out a, uh, what's called a um an individual student remote learning plan. It's not an IEP. It's just how are we gonna deliver the services on the IEP during the school closure time. Um, and, and so what I'm asking for from these schools is I want an individual remote learning plan from each of our students. We are contacting our families of our students who are at these schools to ask if they're actually getting the service. Um, and then, and again, an assurance that if someone says we need to provide compensatory service, services, that the, the, the residential or day school is responsible for that, because if they're telling me they're doing a hundred percent of the service, they shouldn't be in need for compensatory services. Um, and compensatory services are not services that happen because it was regression. Compensatory services are services that were promised but never delivered. Um, examples of that are, you know, and a staff member is absent. Right? They can't deliver a speech and language or a reading uh, um, service. Um, and if there are enough of those, it can impact the student's access to the education that was promised through the IEP, called a Free and Appropriate Public Education, F E. You'll hear that a lot. Um, and, and it's, it's a really great law or, or standard, but it's a really subjective one. Um, and, and the people who know it best are the service providers. Uh, they know the kids they work with. So um the only thing I can do is ask parents, uh, is your child participating in remote learning? Is the, is their private school reaching out and sending you Zoom meetings or posting things on Google Classrooms? Because we're asking those schools, and they're saying, yes, we're doing this. We, we need to confirm it some way. And if not, I will go back to those schools saying, you're saying you're doing this, but my family's telling me you're not. But I have no, again, no problem paying them a hundred percent as long as they do a plan. We can confirm it's being done, and we um, and, and they'll take on any compensatory services for misservices as we're paying them tuition to do them. Um, that's my stand. I don't know if it'll be successful. Um, what's the, what could happen? Well, if we don't pay the bill, they could essentially unenroll our student. Uh, and then we're on the hook again for, you know, with the financial, with the fiduciary responsible district. So if we don't pay the bill, then we're not meeting the IEP. So it's a little different than the buses that you know, we have the money, but we don't necessarily have the authority because it's all done through federal law with the IEP. So it's, it's a challenging um situation. One of our schools, Whitney Academy, that we deal with, has been fabulous. They provided us a remote learning plan, reporting that the kids are getting the services. Um, just fabulous to work with. All the other schools is less than fabulous to work with. Uh, and Mr. Minucci and I will continue to try to work with them to, to figure this out. So that's, that's another sort of unknown right now that we're trying to figure out and work through. Um, I don't know if people saw, but this past weekend, uh, the Commissioner of Education came out with uh updated guidance on remote learning. He, he identified, um, what he, his staff identified some, some, uh, gave us some more information. They really outlined some important uh, what they call power standards, uh, things that as educators, we should be sure we're addressing in various subject areas. Um, our principals, this is uh, powers, and our staff will be going through those to to say, which of those standards have we al- already covered? Where, where do we stand with that? You know, we just touched on it. Have we hit it hard? Have we not touched it yet? And make plans to address those standards moving forward. Um, our, our principals la- end of last week, uh, sent out guidance on the assessment plan, how kids will be quote-unquote graded. Again, I'll say to parents, please don't look at this in the traditional sense. We're, we're way beyond traditional uh, where we are right now. The District of Education has encouraged us to use a credit, no credit um, approach um with empathy, because there are families out there that don't necessarily or can't necessarily access the, the curriculum and, and the work, uh, particularly the digital uh, stuff. So we will continue to provide hard copy, but even there, there just like with food services, there are families that can't necessarily come. We definitely have families where the parents are still working. They're essential employees and are going into work. For those that aren't necessarily essential, they, and maybe working from home and have a hard time doing their job and providing the instruction, especially our younger students. Our, our older kids can be a little more self-directed, maybe need a little boost to keep doing their work. Uh, but our, our really, our younger kids, our kindergarten is our first, our second graders really need a parent with them, even third and fourth grade. Uh, and if parents aren't able to, to do that because of their work schedule or other challenges, then, and that would be unfair. So we're really trying to focus on making sure kids have access, that kids are connected. Um, and we'll continue to look at the curriculum in terms of uh, the standards that we need to address and go from there. Um, this is new ground for everybody, and we're, we're feeling our way through, and I think we're doing a really good job with it. Just um hard to, I've had several conversations with parents. They're trying to apply sort of more traditional thinking to a very untraditional sort of situation. Uh, you know, is my kid gonna get a grade on this? Don't worry about the grade. We need to, we need them to do the work because next year, they're gonna be in the next grade level, and they need to be prepared. We don't wanna spend a lot of time reteaching. So the more we can get kids uh ready for when we return, the better. That's, that's the grade, uh, not the A, the B, the C, uh, that, that uh, we traditionally see. Um. And while all this is happening, we're also starting to look at reopening. Um, reopening is scary, folks. I was in a meeting where they were talking about things like altered schedules, taking temperatures of kids, um having desks be at least six feet apart. Um, all sorts of things that do not jive with school. No, no major lunch rooms. Kids not moving from class to class, like we're really gonna have to rethink. Um, if those are the conditions we can reopen on in the fall, um, how we do this. Uh, and I don't have any great ideas at this moment, but we are talking about it. We are working. I'm working with other superintendents. We have a state, um a group of stakeholders, superintendents, et cetera, working at the state level. More employed, I'll leave nurses, working with the nurses group and medical folks on one of the medical conditions in schools and P P E and all, all those things that we would never even think twice about that we really have to consider. So uh, there's a lot of work that's gonna go into reopening. So we've already started that uh, that work. It's at the very beginning stages, but um, there are some really, uh I guess, things I didn't necessarily think we would have to do when we reopen, but we are going, have to do them. Uh, and it wasn't because I didn't wanna do them. I guess I just never thought of it that way, uh, because this is so outrageous, uh, this whole situation.
Well, I mean, I, the only positive is, you know, everyone has to do it, so.
Yeah, so, and we'll share, and we'll share. That's what we've been doing, you know, uh, internally and externally. And that's, that's the only way we're gonna get through it is to, to sort of group think this, to figure out the best way to uh, to meet whatever standards they set for uh reentry. Um, so that's the coronavirus update. I, I wish it was a different name for it. Um, that's kind of side of the coronavirus now. Um, but that's where we're at.
All right.
Moving, moving on, uh, our regionalization study committee is up and running. We have our, another meeting uh, on this Wednesday. We've identified a, a, a consultant management solution. It ended our last meeting. We've signed a contract. We're good to go. And I guess this Wednesday's meeting is when we really start to work. Uh, all the other, the other meetings we've had have been more prep kinds of uh work. So kind of exciting to sit down Wednesday night, really get busy with that. And then finally, uh, FY twenty-one budget update, and Maria, of course, jump in. Uh, at our last uh, meeting, I think we indicated that, that, that our um, our tribe board meeting, which was scheduled for, I think, tomorrow, no, Thursday night.
Yeah.
Um, was postponed till uh, late May, May twenty-first, I think. Um.
The third, Thursday in May.
Yeah, so um, and, and the, the the forecast for the budget, as you all know, is, is horrible. Um, all the revenues are down. Um, we're gonna have to really rethink the budget that we have and um, probably start looking at more of a um, a level-funded budget as opposed to a level-service budget. Uh, level-funded budget is the exact dollars we had this year is what we'd have next year. We all know that, that actually means we can buy less. Um, so um but again, we're not alone in this, and we don't know what kind of relief packages will be coming. Silver lining is our FY twenty budget. There is no indication that that will be cut, uh, which was a possibility with, you know, what a four revenues being so low. Uh, but uh, the state legislature is working together. The governor's budget is completely gone. They threw it out. And I believe the, the combined ways and means are gonna be issuing one budget from the House and the Senate rather than each of the, each of the houses doing their own, and that might not be out till June or even July. Uh, and if it's July, they're looking at a one-twelfth budget.
Which means they're funding month by month?
Yeah, based on what we received in FY twenty. So I guess, what it come on that, it's a lot of unknowns, I guess.
Um, so I don't think Mr. Heineck is there, is he?
I don't see him right now.
Um, he's gonna be on in a minute. He had to put his children to bed. He's home with them tonight, so. Uh.
Why don't we jump ahead there? If you wanna go ahead, Mrs. Priestley, with your report?
All right. Um, so in my report, I just outlined some of the things that we've been doing to connect with our students. Um, we had done a couple rounds of learning packets, which moving forward, we will make available on an as-needed basis. Um, we won't be doing another round of school-wide packets. So if any um, parents or um, families need copies of the work um, because they prefer it in hard copy, we can make that available. Um, just let us know. Uh, email your child's teacher. Uh, we did get all of our students on Google Classroom. K to six preschool is um, doing things a little bit differently. So if you have any questions about the preschool program, um, you can talk to myself or Mr. Minucci, um, or either preschool teacher. Um, so the Google Classroom is working out really well. All the students are able to get access to their activities and get all the links that they need for the video conferencing, which has been great. We've been doing, some teachers are doing Google Meet. Some teachers are doing Zoom. Um, Google Meet is probably where we'll end up. Um, right now, we've been using Zoom, um because the K to two students didn't have Google Classroom at first, uh, but now that they have MB Schools accounts, they can all be on Meet, which will be a little bit um, easier to schedule, because it kind of exists in our own little server world of, of our G suite. Um, and then just starting today, the uh, teachers have been putting everything on a week-at-a-glance document, which is great because it has everything that the students need to do in every subject, um, Monday through Friday, and those will be made available weekly. Um, and the format is consistent, grade levels to grade levels. I think it'll just help at home with organizing and scheduling. So that's our um, kind of our approach, uh, as of right now. We've been, we did a couple of spirit weeks um, which were fun, and I think we'll be doing another one sometime at the beginning of May. So look for that. Um, if you have any questions or comments, uh, email or call, and uh, we'll get right back to you.
So can you just reiterate, um, if parents are having any sort of, you know, issues or struggles, they should be able to email the teachers, right, or contact the teachers and?
Absolutely. So the biggest, um, uh, the most important thing right now is to keep those lines of communication open. Um, if your child is struggling, or if you have any questions, to email the teachers. Um, if you're not getting a response back for whatever reason, um, it could be that the email address was wrong, email me. Uh, you can call the school, leave a message. I check the messages pretty frequently. Um, but definitely, uh, the more that we hear back from families, the better we will be able to provide um, the best programming uh, for the residents of North Brookfield, because um, you know, it, we don't necessarily know, we we know what we're sending out, but we don't necessarily know how that's being received. So the more, if there's any problems at all, any concerns, questions, suggestions, anything at all, please let us know.
And just also, I put it out there that, I mean, I know many of you are in the same position that we are, where you may have kids at home that you're trying to help out with their school as well, and that I, I would guess many of you are very empathetic, and that and that some of our parents might have jobs, like, you know, in healthcare, where there's a lot of pressure on them, and maybe that's something parents might wanna share, just so everybody's aware of the situation, of what's going on. So. Yeah, we're in this together.
We really are. I mean, I have my kids at home too, and um, if you hear them crying in the background, it's because it's bedtime, and no one wants to go to bed clock, right? So just, um, you know, know we're here for you, and, you know, we're continuing to support families. If you need technology, you know, we're, we're still lending out Chromebooks. Um, like I said, we're making paper packets available for people that need it. Um, if you just want someone to vent to, um, I can be on the phone with you. I'm happy to listen. So anything you need, we're here.
And Mrs. O and um, Mr. Keller and the uh, I can't pronounce the other man's name, I'm afraid, are all available as well, right?
Yeah, our support staff, um, are on call for whatever you need. Um, we have our BCBA, our Behavior Intervention Specialist, our Special Education Staff, um, any, anyone, everyone is uh, is on hand to chat, so reach out.
All right. Thanks, Mrs. Priestley.
You're welcome.
And um, we'll move on to Mr. Minucci.
How y'all doing?
Good.
So we've been, um, like everyone else, Student Services has been extremely busy. We're in the reporting season right now, and Rich kind of alluded to a, a couple areas. Uh, we did Uh, we did the extraordinary relief reporting. Um, we just recently did the sped increment reporting, and we'll be doing Circuit Breaker real soon as well. So that's, that is taking a lot of time. In addition, um, we are, we are in communication with our out-of-district folks, and, uh, we're also surveying other districts to see how they're handling certain things as well. To go to kind of play off of what Sarah was saying, I think our remote learning, uh, is, is gone remarkably well from a teacher's standpoint. The, our special education teachers, like our general education teachers, have put together the necessary programs to, to reach students. And I can confidently say we've, we're, we're reaching the vast majority of, of our students. There's literally, there, there's only a couple of students that we're still having difficulty with, um, reaching on a regular and consistent basis. So when, when it all possible, we're, we're doing it, you know, through, through a lot of the, the things that Sarah mentioned, with, with special education as well, Zoom meetings, uh, Google Classroom, Google Meets, things like that. But we also have an obligation, though, to meet those families that, that for whatever reason, or those students for whatever reason, can't access, uh, things through, through the, uh, through those mediums. Rich also pointed out, one of the challenges is with the younger kiddos, because it does, it, it, it does become almost like a coaching type of, uh, of, um, situation where, where either the teacher or the specialist is, is really relying on the parent as a coach. And, and that's a tough thing, and, and I think that's frustrated a lot of parents, and I, and I definitely empathize with it. Again, I go back to talking to the out-of-district, um, folks. We pay a lot of money to these out-of-district, um, uh, schools, and their, their modeling approach really has not been much different than ours. And in a lot of instances, I would say we're delivering at a much higher level. And even places like, um, if you go to Children's Hospital in Boston, who we've, uh, we've been in contact with, they're taking the same approach that, that, that we're having to take. So that being said, though, I, I think the teachers, we're, we're, we're well-oiled. I think that, that with the specialist, there's some fine tuning that needs to be done with, with certain providers, and, and I'm in the process of doing that. Like I said, I'm in constant contact with other districts to see what's working, what's not working. Um, talk to a lot of parents on a regular and consistent basis as well. Looking to the future, a couple of things that, that we have to plan for is summer school, which is, is going to be very difficult. We're going to plan for both remote learning, summer school, and a physical, um, summer school. But it, it's challenging, we're, we're going to have to plan for both, and that, that, that has its own set of, of challenges. So, um, overall, I think things are going good. Like I said, there's a couple areas that, that we have to fine tune a little bit, but I'm very happy with, with, uh, the vast majority of, of my staff and what they're doing in, in these circumstances.
Thanks, Mr. Minucci. Um, I know for the special ed staff, in particular, other people that I know that work for other districts, it is, um, very different, and certainly, I know, um, they're working very hard to make sure they to the kids try and continue to learn, so appreciate that. Um, Ms. Powers?
Hi, everyone. Um, so my report, just, uh, you know, reiterating what other people are saying about the remote learning and the fact that teachers are really stepping up to engage students through the hard packets, online, um, Zoom or Google Meet meetings. It's just been really great to see everyone kind of step up. I feel like the community as a whole has really stepped up during this time. Um, as Mr. Lynn said, we have received from the commissioner the standards that they are seeing as the power standard. So we're working this week to have teachers share with us what they have done, what they need to maybe focus on a little bit more, so that those standards prepare students for next year. And then speaking of next year, even though things are a little wonky right now, we have to think about, um, some of the things at the junior, senior high school for next year. So in your packet is, um, a new bell schedule that we've created. We started this process back in January and looked at a schedule that would do a couple different things. One, bring our flex block back into the schedule, so allow for some intervention and extension periods for students, as well as bringing advisory. Um, so that is in your packet, it's a seven-day drop one, um, and it provides a chance for students to, again, bring that flex block to kind of build some different programs that we've, we've had growing in the past. And then along with that, Mrs. Sears, uh, the Guidance Counselor at the Junior Senior High School, and I have been scheduling students, um, so working to take their request and create, you know, put them into that bell schedule so they fit. Obviously, as we think about the reopening, we might have some adjustments to what things look like, but we're planning for this now, and we hope to have a rough copy of the schedule by the end of the school year and to be able to get things out to students over the summer for what their schedules will look like next year.
Thanks so much.
That's all we have.
For all the work for current and also next year.
Of course.
And so the, the high school schedule essentially is kind of going back similar to what it was prior to this year?
Yes, it's similar, um, we have, in the past, the different days had different schedules. Um, we had a long block, so we've pulled it in, so it's really every day, it's the same timing, it's just what, what block is when.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Shaw is here, if you want to give us your update real quick? He was here, Mr. Shaw, is that you? Mr. Shaw? Oh, there you are.
Wrong spot. Uh, just a quick update, I, I had, uh, put in our, uh, in my report, the, uh, the work we've been doing while in the, uh, current situation, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, getting ready for, uh, what sounds to be like some work, uh, hopefully soon. But, uh, you know, just a shout out to the other departments in town that we were fortunate enough to get, uh, that disinfectant spray and been able to go down and, and, uh, do some different, uh, departments, as well as Town Hall, uh, disinfecting as, as they needed, uh, the ambulance and police department actually, uh, saw the, the unit and, uh, said, can you, uh, can you help me get one of those? And, and, uh, they're of course paying for it, and, and, uh, we got it, we got it ordered for them, and they took delivery of it, uh, last, uh, Thursday. So, uh, that's great news for them, uh, keep them safe and, uh, so forth. And we look forward to, uh, keep working with the different departments as, as we go along.
Yeah, um, thanks so much for, uh, for doing that. I mean, of course you would, but it's awesome, but we have the opportunity to help the other departments in town, so.
Yep, working together, that's what it's all about.
Um, Mrs. O'Hara isn't here, if I can find her report real quick. I know that she's been doing, must have been doing a lot to get all the classrooms set up, all the younger kids set up with, uh, Google Classroom, um, a lot of work there. And, uh, she also mentions the pandemic EBT account, which I saw posted, um, by our state legislature. They will issue benefits to families with children who are eligible for free and reduced school meals. So she's in the process of compiling this report, so that will help a lot of families as well.
Yeah, so, so, Mrs. Tucker, that's, they, we got, uh, we were, uh, informed that the Department of Transitional Assistance, uh, and, and each school district would work together. So Cindy, as you know, takes care of all of our state reporting and data. She'll be running a report and providing that to the Department of Transitional Assistance. And, uh, for any families that do receive free reduced lunch, um, there'll be some, uh, relief through, uh, preloaded EBT cards. So, uh, that's a lot of work for her, because this didn't exist. They just, we want to do this, and they're being asked to sort of figure out how to do it, and.
Well, we appreciate.
Yeah.
We appreciate Mrs. O'Hara doing all that work, uh, for the, to help the kids and the families, so. Um, if Mr. Heineck isn't here, maybe, um, Mr. Lynn, you could just go over his report real quick. Probably the biggest thing for, for the high school is the graduation question, right?
Yeah, so, um, I will say essentially ditto to all the things that the other administrators said about, uh, online schedule, the remote learning, a remote assessment plan, A student assistance. Um, all of those things, that, that Mrs. Priestley said about the elementary school, uh, really apply to the junior, senior high as well. I think one of the, um, one of the biggest things is how do we celebrate, uh, some of those milestone events? With obviously graduation being kind of at the top of the heap. Uh, certainly our sixth graders and our eighth graders and our kindergarteners have promotion day celebrations. There's all sorts of wonderful end of the year kinds of activities. But for our class of two thousand twenty, it, it looks like graduation will not look like it, uh, has looked in the past. But that's not to say we have not been thinking and talking about what it might look like. Our class advisors, Mr. Rigme and Mr. McNeil, have met with our seniors, uh, several times to discuss, uh, that very topic. They've had brainstorming sessions. Um, my plan is in the next, uh, week or so to have a, a student and parent, because as the parent of a high school senior, I don't get invited very often to those types of meetings. So I will need to reach out to the parents directly and invite the kids, um, to a meeting to talk about what graduation might look like. There are lots of ideas out there, um, some of which other districts are, are playing around with, and we'll certainly be open to any ideas that, that come from within our district. You know, the question will be is can we do this and adhere to the, um, really the, uh, how they, all the safety, um, criteria that would go with social distancing, et cetera. So, uh, we're, we're doing that, we're going to have those conversations, those conversations have been happening, and, uh, we're going to come up with something, uh, that's very special, indifferent, that they will remember for the rest of their lives, which is what graduation is supposed to be. They just have to sort of come to grips with the idea that it won't look like it did last year or five years ago or ten years ago, it will definitely be different. But it won't be any less special or any less important, or, uh, and we won't be any less proud of our students, uh, for their accomplishments. So, uh, hang in there, uh, if you are watching or you hear about this from parents to students. We are, uh, thinking about the best way to do this, and we'll, uh, we're going to include, uh, you in that discussion to make sure we come up with the best solution we can, we can come up with, uh, to celebrate our class of two thousand and twenty.
I think, Gina, I think a special T-shirt is warranted in this situation, so.
I agree, I've seen some examples, and people have sent some my way, so.
Ooh, excellent. All right. Um, all right, so thank you, everybody, for, once again, for everybody, all your work. Um, I have to say, I'm always amazed by educators and what y'all do. So, um, moving on, we have no old business, no policy?
No. Still smile about that one.
So, uh, new business, we, um, need to approve the memo of, of, uh, understanding with the.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have two MOUs, uh, one with our Teachers Association, one with our ESPs. Um, because there are so many things that are outlined in the contract that we just can't do. Um, the recommendation is to come to agreement. We met, the administrative team and I met with the, uh, union leadership, and we had very productive meetings. Uh, we came up with, um, the documents that you have in your, your packets. The documents are very similar, uh, just with some slight differences based on jobs and job descriptions. And, uh, Mr. Saret actually came into the office today to sign those, so those have been approved by the union. Uh, and they take, um, school committee approval.
So, um, any of the other members have any questions about those MOUs, or, um, after you reviewed them, anything to add, or?
Yeah, I was just curious about the, um, I can't remember the exact wording, but I think it was under expectations for teachers. It mentioned keeping a log of parent and student interaction. Is that something that everyone's expected to?
In, in the MO, not in the MOU, but in the Remote Learning Plan.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah. Uh, so those were recommendations that, um, really stemmed from a number of different areas. One was with all the sort of challenge with Zoom and, and, and other video and audio conferencing, software, that it would be important for educators just as a, a, a sort of protect yourself kind of thing, ensure that you keep track. Uh, and then the other thing was the idea of connecting with all families and ensuring that we're not missing anyone. Uh, part of what we expect is if, if a teacher hasn't heard from a, a student or a parent in, in a week, that they are forwarding that to their administrator, and the administrator will then reach out to the family.
Yeah.
Not with the idea of you're in trouble for not attending class, with, you know, what can we help with? It might be technology, it might be, uh, it might just be work schedules, it might be something else. So the, the really idea was a double check for the educators to make sure.
Right. So is it a formal log that people have to turn in, or is it more just an idea that you document?
Just, just keep a log, you don't need to turn it in, just have it in case and use it for your own purposes to double check, with the idea that if you did need it, you had it.
Yep, makes sense, makes sense.
Do you mind if I jump in just to add something to that? Just so that you know, at the elementary level, um, what we are doing is we have a T log so that, um, any of the staff, including myself, who are reaching out to families, we just kind of track it so that we're not, you know, multiple staff members or family over the course of a week. Because if you get a call from our reading specialist and the classroom teacher and the special ed teacher and the adjustment counselor, and then it becomes like, I just talked to somebody from this area, you know? So we wanted to make sure that we were streamlining that process and not overburdening families with outreach. So just to give you some context at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions in regards to those, we do have to, uh, vote to approve them, so we need a motion?
Sure, motion to approve the MOUs, um, between the North Brookfield Public Schools and the Teachers Association, as well as the Educational Support Staff Personnel Association.
So I have a second?
Second.
Second. Was that Ruth? Was that Ruth?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, great, so all in favor?
Aye. Yes, aye.
Um, actually, could you say your name for, um, for our recording?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
Great, thank you. I put the Bus Transportation Contract Amendment on there with the hope that it would be ready, it is not ready yet, so we can bypass that.
Okay, so then the Special Education Stabilization, Tuition and Transportation is the same, uh, contract we've been approving all year, correct?
Yeah, and that's from prior to the closure.
Okay. So we just need a motion for the, to, uh, for that?
Motion to approve the transfer of the amount of fifteen thousand fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents uh, from the Special Education Stabilization Account, um, for the tuition and transportation of students.
I second.
All in favor?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
Thank you. Um, in your packet, there's a school choice memo. For those of you who've been on the board before, you know that. In your packet, there's a school choice memo. For those of you who've been on the board before, you know that each year the school committee needs to approve participation in the school choice program, which I then need to report to the state. If you do approve school choice, which I am recommending that you do, we also have to approve the number of open seats by grade level. So in your packet, there are a couple of different a couple of different things. I'll call it up for you here so that you can see it. So the first question is, do you want to approve school choice? Participation of school choice program? And if you do, then I have, let's see. So these are the seats that would be available at the elementary level. In the past, we have not opened seats up in kindergarten just because it's really unknown how many, how many kids are going to sign up for kindergarten. And then we identify open seats by grade level, first through six. And so those are the open seats in each grade level. And then I will show you the junior senior high level. So the first column is obviously the grade level. The second column is the current number of students in that grade. And the last column is the number of recommended seats.
Anyone have any questions or anything? I take that as a no. So we need a motion then to accept the school choice?
Motion to approve the participation in the school program for the year 2020 to 2021.
I get.
All in favor?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
Today, I need to do a vote on the seats.
Okay.
Okay, do we need to read like the number of each seat?
You don't. You can say as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve the open school choice seats as presented for Northfield Elementary and High School.
I second.
All in favor?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
Excellent. Approval of extended leave. Gabby Pepin is an elementary special education teacher. She is actually due to have her baby in early mid. She has requested to not take maternity leave and continue to provide remote teaching during this time. Obviously, she'll need some time off right around the birth, but feels like she can continue to provide what her students need. And I frankly agree with her, you know, in terms of she has a small number of students. They do have a lot of needs, but she has a lot of support with various service providers. What she is requesting, though, is to take an extended leave at the start of the next school year. And based on our contract, we are able to approve that with my approval and the school committee's approval. So Gabby is requesting to take from August 24th, the date that teachers are due back through October, Friday, October 30th, and returning to work Monday, November 2nd. That is per Article 15 of our contract with the Teachers Association. So I am bringing this to you with the idea that I am recommending that we approve it, that you approve it.
Okay, so if we could get a motion then to?
Sure, motion to approve extended maternity leave for Gabrielle Pepin.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. I'm grappling with the idea that she'll be able to perform. Is she a full-time staff member?
She is.
Oh, okay.
First, first baby? Just curious.
I could do my daughter's speaker with an infant and I, I'm grabbing, I I wonder if that's, I don't know, I see that as being problematic.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that, you know, Mr. Lynn and Mr. Manucci, they, you both approved this, right? You brought it to us with this.
We did.
Yeah, you feel, because you said she has a number of support people as well.
Yeah, so there's two things. One is she has a, she teaches at one of our sub separate programs. So she has a very small number of students. She's going to do a lot of the pre-work prior to the birth of the baby. She is going, my words to her were, you need to be upfront with us with what you can do. She's obviously going to take a few sick days, you know, it might be a week around that, but it feels like she can post work for those students.
Okay, I guess you guys know the parameters of the job?
May I also ask, I noticed in your letter is, and I'm not trying to be a jerk here, but extended leave is unpaid?
It is.
Okay, so it's not double, we're not extending, okay.
Is it just F M L A?
Yeah, no offense either. I don't know this person.
It is not. It's part of our contract that staff can request extended leave for a variety of reasons. And, but, but what it often says is you need to come back at a certain point. So like at the start, it would, you know, often it is like the start of the second semester, like January 2nd or something like that. Which is why I'm bringing it to the school committee, because this is a really, really challenging position to fill and the students that she works with are extremely vulnerable and extremely needy in terms of especially the connection with their teacher. So from my perspective, and I think from Mr. Manucci's perspective, the sooner we can get happen back into the classroom, the better for our kids.
Can I weigh in on this a little bit?
Please do.
So one of the things, Elizabeth, to answer your question, the sub separate classroom are very unique and if we hire a sub in this remote learning, like we've weighed this out. I really believe that you'd have diminishing returns to the student in having a sub for such a short period of time and in the remote type of setting that we've, we've kind of shifted to. It's tough enough when we, when we're in session. So I really do, I 100% think this is the right move. I really do.
Okay, I appreciate hearing that from you guys. Thank you.
Do you have a motion and a second, Maria? That's where you left it.
All right, so all in favor?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Oops, Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
All right, and the last one is, you see, means the Southern Worcester County Education Collaborative has to produce a quarterly report, the second quarter report. And and your approval.
Need a motion to approve the second quarter Southern Worcester County. And I don't remember the rest, what it's, the rest of it is, but the report. Sorry.
Motion to approve the quarter two Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Kristen DePass, yes.
Ruth Hontham, yes.
Elizabeth Malad, yes.
Debbie Maggio, yes.
Maria Bider Tucker, yes.
All right, in terms of donations, all of the donations we had were food bank donations, so they're not necessarily donations to our, our bank account, so to speak. Any of those I will gather and have you approve at the May meeting. I just did not have a chance to pull them all together for this.
Well, in regards to the, you know, the food donation, you know, we have, you know, we're very, very fortunate that we live in a very giving community and a lot of people have been helping out both with in-kind donations, financial donations, both, you know, community groups, individuals, churches, and we're really, really grateful to everybody who has donated because it really makes a difference. And thank you also to Mrs. Floyd and Mrs. Zapula for managing those, our nurses for managing those food cantrys for our families.
Yeah, they're really working hard at it. It's much appreciated, I know, by families.
All right, so Debbie, you're up.
Yes, I move, we adjourn. Hi, Mr. Heinecke.
Literally just got both kids to bed and so, thanks, everybody.
Do you have anything to add before we adjourn?
I think I just heard you guys echo the sentiment that I have, that the community has been absolutely amazing. The teachers have been amazing. The kids are working their butts off. Some are stressed, some are struggling, but we're all there to help. So it's, I'm just super impressed and I thank all the teacher staff and everybody in this meeting for everything they're doing because it really making a big difference. So that's what I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion to adjourn. Did we have a second?
Second.
All right, so all in favor? To say, yes.
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 Yes, all right.
Everyone, so.
Thank you, stay well.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.